I'd like to call the Mentor City Council regular meeting for December 2, 2025 to order. Tonight's invocation will be given by Councilperson Dowling.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
[inaudible]
Julie, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dowling.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes. Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Pinkerman.
He is excused tonight.
Mr. Mern.
Here.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Okay, before we go into our regular meeting agenda, I'd like everybody present to stand for a moment of silence for County Commissioner Rich Ragovich, who passed away on November 26. Rich was a great guy and a wonderful commissioner, and he will be missed.
For sure.
Okay, moving on, approval of minutes. Council, you are in receipt of the November 13, 2025 work session meeting minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling. Yes. Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Okay, council, you're also in receipt of the November 18, 2025 work session meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
And council, also November 18, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Okay, tonight, public hearings, we have none. Tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 25-0-097.
An ordinance to authorize transferring funds, advancing funds, and revising appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gonscheck, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak, and to members of council, ordinance 97 is primarily intended to finalize year-end. You'll see several budget reductions included in the ordinance, and that is to account for projects that are not going to be happening this year and are going to actually be going on next year is the bulk of those. And the reason for the reductions is we want to make sure that the actual revenue collected in those funds cover the final appropriations set by council. In regards to some of the increases, the most significant is the $5 million that's allocated for the Garfield Park splash pad. That's if council awards that project later this evening. Then two other adjustments worth noting, there is a transfer in a budget increase of about $762,000, and that's to account for the final repayment for the amphitheater fund project to make the general fund whole. And the increase of $750,000 in the self-insurance fund is to set aside funds that we may need, will most likely need some of that to cover the claims that are going to finish out the year in the self-insurance fund.
Okay, council.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number 25-0-097 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-098.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase motor vehicle fuel on the open market during fiscal year 2026 upon such terms and prices as are most advantageous to the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. And council, these next several ordinances, I know you are familiar, we do these every year. This time, it allows us to go into the new fiscal year to be able to purchase certain commodities that are essentially based on spot pricing. That includes, in this particular instance, the prices for fuel, prices for natural gas, electricity, insurance, and the like. So we always try to put ourselves in the best position to get the best pricing for the public, and our ability to do that on an as-needed basis, sometimes within short periods of time, has been to the benefit of the community.
Okay.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 25-0-098 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-099.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into natural gas purchase contracts for municipal facilities during the year 2026 upon such terms and at such prices as are deemed most advantageous to the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Nothing more. Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-0-099 has been approved. Next up is ordinance number 25-0-0-100.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into an electricity purchase contracts for municipal facilities during the year 2026 upon such terms and at such prices as are deemed most advantageous to the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 25-0-0, I'm sorry, -100 has been approved. Ordinance number 25-0-101.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a participation agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation relative to the purchase of rock salt and declaring an emergency.
Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-0-101 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-102.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into insurance contracts during the year 2026 for and on behalf of the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number 25-0-102 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-103.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract and one alternate to RMH Concrete and Foundations, Inc., for the Tyler Sidewalk Construction Project and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. And council, happy to see this project moving forward. This is the installation, the new sidewalk on the south side of Tyler Boulevard, which will go from Hopkins to Heasley Roads. We did have a low bid of $394,712.75 and to a high bid of $535,340. The engineer's estimate on the project was $570,857. A review of the bid from RMH Concrete and Foundations Incorporated indicates that it is in conformance with all contract requirements, so that we do recommend approval of this contract. I will remind council that we did receive a grant of over $400,000 from Lake Tran to assist with the installation of this, and they have let us know that pending any change orders for this, they would be willing to cover our local portion of this project and pay for this in its totality. So we're appreciative of that gesture and of the grant overall. This will be a great addition to those employees who rely on bus transportation to and from the Tyler corridor, which of course is our main job providing sector in the city, so we appreciate their help.
Right, okay, council.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 25-0-103 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-104.
An ordinance awarding and authorizing the city manager to execute a bid contract with Concord Road Equipment LLC for the purchase of two dump truck bodies and related equipment and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Vernon, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. Members of council, two bids were open on November 14 for the purchase of dump truck bodies. The vendor with the lowest bid did not meet our bid specifications. The second bid from Concord Road Equipment met all specifications and has successfully completed many projects for the city of Mentor, so I recommend that the contract for the dump bodies is awarded to Concord Road Equipment for the amount of $134,970.65.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 25-0-104 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-105.
An ordinance accepting and awarding a contract to Motorola Solutions, Inc., for the purchase of 27 Motorola mobile radios and related accessories and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Sack, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. Members of council, these 27 radios will replace existing Motorola radios that are no longer being supported. This year alone, we've lost 15% of our fleet that's gone out of service or are inoperable. We're unable to determine the attrition rate. We can lose another 15 next year or 50% of our radios. We can only assume this trend will continue. Many more radios will be inoperable, leaving us limited number to operate safely on the fire ground and serve the community. We're also working on a limited timeframe as we have an existing Motorola discount through the Ohio Fire Marshal's Grant, which is a 40% discount on accessory, saving the city $30,000.
Chief, I have a question. These Motorola phones, these are a combination of the handheld, the lapel type, these are what our people actually go into a scene with in their end, right?
Correct. These would be used, these would be assigned to every member on the fire ground.
Okay, so these need to work.
Absolutely.
We can't have them not working at a critical time.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 25-0-105 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-106.
An ordinance accepting and awarding a bid contract to Action Contractors LLC for the Garfield Park Splash Pad and Bath House Project and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, and we're very excited to bring this project to you. It's been a long time in coming, and we're excited about the future of Garfield Park and all the kids and families are going to be able to enjoy the new splash park. I will ask Mr. Kaminsky to offer you some thoughts on this.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak, members of council, and I'd like to reiterate again what Mr. Filippiak said. This is a long time coming. It's going to be fantastic for the south side of Mentor and be able to handle the growth that we see down there for many years. Us as a department are very excited about it. But on November 25, 2025, four bid proposals were received for the building of the Garfield Park Splash Pad and Bath House. The bids ranged from a low of $5,994,000 to a high bid of $7,175,000. As you had seen, the engineer's estimate was $5.7 million. The low bid was received by Action Contractors LLC, whose bid was found to be in conformance with all contract requirements. Based upon a review from the city's Parks and Recreation Department, Burgess and Nipo Engineering and Architectural Firm, it is therefore recommended to award the contract to Action Contractors LLC. And I just saw there was a mistake in there. They're not located in Mentor, they're actually located in Bedford. I apologize for that. Thank you.
Counsel?
Matt, would you like to suspend?
Suspend.
It's in your ward.
Yeah, move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
And council, also November 18, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 25-0-106 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-107.
An ordinance providing for appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Mentor, Ohio for the period beginning January 1, 2026, to and including December 31, 2026, and declaring an emergency.
Ken, this is the big one.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Very pleased to be able to bring you our budget, our spending plan for the next fiscal year beginning January 1. We appreciate all of council's help in helping us get to this point. I say this every year, but I can't stress enough how beneficial it is for us to be able to work together to get a budget adopted before the end of the year. It gives our departments an entire 12 months to really work on the goals that you set for us, and we very much appreciate that. I believe that this is a very responsible budget. It allows us to accomplish many of the, continue to provide the services that we do, and also provide some very important new capital projects that I think will be well-received by the community. So we're happy to answer any questions you may have on that. And again, I want to also give my appreciation to all of the staff who works hard to get this document to you before the end of the year, but in particular, the finance department, who has a lot of work to do in the last couple of weeks heading into this to get it ready. So they're looking forward to getting a little sleep.
Ken, thank you to all your staff for their thoughtfulness and hard work on this. You know, it's always great to see it come together, and then by the time the end of the year comes, we can vote on this, and it's off to 2026. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second. But before we take the roll call, Mr. Filippiak, just a couple of suggestions for the future. Once again, thank you for a great budget. Matt, you did a wonderful job, took over for your predecessor. But a couple of things, which I think we need to really look at from a financials point of view, is, first of all, I think we need to try to be a little more accurate. We underestimate a lot. Projects are pushed back forward, they're always pushed to the next year. Number two is that we need to do a better job of getting back to our residents. I've talked about it before in terms of a property tax cut. I started on council, Born was around that time, Mr. Filippiak, when you came aboard, we didn't have any money in our savings. What we were under covered was about $3 million. Right now, under covered is $82 million. We have $122 million between bonds and our savings account that's earning 4.2%. That's over $5 million in interest we're earning a year. We could take that $5 million, and we could help people with their property taxes, we could help people with the fire levy, we could help people with their garbage. Because as we know, with the property tax cut rates we're against, the schools will be affected. Everyone else is going to be affected. This money has to come from software. It's got to come from sales tax, it's got to come from property tax, it's got to come from somewhere. So we need to do a better job going forward to help our residents, because in order to have families here, we have to grow them up, we have to keep them here, and want them to stay here. Otherwise, they're going to take opportunities elsewhere, and we are, or they're not going to stay at all, so to speak. And that's why we're the oldest county in, or pardon me, the oldest county in the state. So we have to do a better job on that. But when it comes to Garfield Park, that's our largest, most heavily-used park. We need a three-year plan at least with that park, just like we do with Civic Center. We have a lot going on at Civic Center, including new basketball courts, redone pickleball courts, parking lot. We need to do that, we're not doing that here. So it's really important that we always are trying to reinvent the wheel, especially from a financial standpoint. The money's there, let's utilize the money and try to give the people the benefit to make them want to live here and make them want to stay here. So with that, I suspend.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Mern.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 25-0-107 has been approved. Next is resolution number 25-r-120.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Coastal Management Assistance Grant Program for financial assistance to perform a Mentor Lagoons Marina Master Plan and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I think you just heard a comment from Councilman Marn about the importance of planning. This is one of those initiatives to do so. We are applying for a grant for the Ohio Department of Natural Resources to do some master planning at the marina. This is not the nature preserve itself, but just looking ahead at some of the planned needs at the marina. Actually, I'll let Mr. Kaminsky offer some comments on that, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak, members of council. And as Councilman Marn indicated, this is looking into the future. Obviously, with the addition of the tower and the amount of people that are now going down to the preserve, for all the things that we do, especially the birding aspect of it, we have a lot of daily issues when it comes to parking, when it comes to the public launch. It's really not in the best location right now. We have some aging facilities that down there that are going to need to be replaced in the future. We appreciate all your support that you give towards the marina that we've made over these last couple of years and the bulkhead, but this is also protecting everything that we have down there in the future and being able to prepare for all the future demands that we're going to have with the amount of people, with the potential of the shoreline, and the potential that the Cleveland History Museum is planning to do for the marsh. So for us, it's pretty important that this gets done and really sets us up for the next five, 10, 15 years. Thank you.
I'll also mention, council, as you know, having a thoughtful plan in place will definitely assist our ability to get funding through these same agencies in the future when we do move ahead with projects.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Question for Ken. I know we have a very big dollar bill item coming up on the shoreline revestment. Do we have any timeframe when we're going to start getting some more information back on that project?
So I have reached out several times now, actually recently, with representatives through Congressman Joyce's office. As you know, we have an appropriation request in place, and that is included in a bill that has yet to be adopted through Congress. I think they're hopeful that that will happen. We've seen some other Lake County projects funded through the spending bills that have already been passed, so we're hopeful that ours will be one of those next in line and that we can move ahead with the next phase of that project, which would be, I think, about $4 million with the due diligence work along that shoreline. We're very excited to hear word on that. If we're not funded, I think we'll probably be back in here talking about how we want to proceed with that next step. So, yeah, we're waiting anxiously, as well as I know you are as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, just, that appropriation, that's what, 1.5 million, is that?
Yeah, I think the request was 1.7, Mr. Kaminsky, is that correct?
That was correct.
Yeah, 1.7. And that would get us into, again, that would start some of the due diligence works that would have to happen in what we then started at the preliminary phases of the, the very early phases of design. Thank you.
Counsel?
Mr. President, in relation to that, and Matt and Ken, you and I have talked about this a little bit, but as we know, this is going to be a huge dollar amount. We estimate 40 million, you know it's going to be more than that. Let's call it 50, 60 million. And we also, which we never did finish talking about, was our debt ratio. You know, years ago, we were like a debt-to-revenue ratio of about 15%. Now we're down to 2.5%. We talked about at the last meeting how our rating companies like us to be somewhere in the vicinity of 5%. So rates are coming down. They're looking at a chance of dropping a quarter point this month, a 78% chance as of today to drop in rates. So what I'm saying is, is now this is a good place where you want to add debt in a good time. So we want to make this project come together with the drop of interest rates so that we could finance this out at their cheap. Because as we all know, interest rates are, when interest rates go down, inflation picks back up, and then interest rates start going back up again to head off inflation. So timing is of the essence, especially since it's such, it's going to be the largest dollar amount that, you know, the city's ever spent on one project, by far.
Yeah, I would agree with you on that, Councilman. I think there's, there's no question that when we get into the bulk of that project that we'll, we'll probably look at, look at issuing some debt on that. I hope we time it right. I mean, I think what, what, you know, this council and past council have, have done very effectively is understood that when those rates are down, that's the time to reinvest. And as you know, all of our debt is at 2% or less, and it is, you know, a very small percentage now of our overall general fund revenue, and that's a great position to be in when you know you have some of those big projects coming up.
We're the opposite of Cleveland Browns. We got a lot of salad cap room. Browns don't have any. But yeah, I mean, Matt, just try to time it together, okay?
We perform better, too.
Exactly.
Move to suspend?
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling? Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling? Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Hey, resolution number 25-R-120 has been approved. Second readings, we have none. Third readings, we have none. Managers report. Ken, that's you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. My Christmas present to you all is a very short report tonight.
Thank you.
Just a reminder to our residents that the yard waste program will continue through December 12th of this year. Residents who receive curbside service can place up to 25 units at the curb on trash day for their pickup. A unit is one bag, one bundle, or a container of yard waste. Mentor Fire hosted its Stuff the Squad event at Target this past Saturday and Sunday, and collecting, and they were very successful at collecting toys and monetary donations in support of the family of Olivia Schneider and the Mayfield Heights Fire Department. All proceeds from the event will benefit local children and need this holiday season, and we want to thank those who generously donated. And on that note, we also want to thank all of our residents for tremendous support they've given to us at all of our events and our programs and our services that we provided this past year. We certainly wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, and a Happy New Year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, clerk's correspondence. Julie?
Council's in receipt of a liquor permit transfer from Deep, Inc. at 6709 Center Street to Calhoun Brothers, LLC at 6709 Center Street. Council is also in receipt of the Mentor Municipal Court Month End Report for October of 2025, and that is all.
Thank you. Commission committee reports. Counsel, you are in receipt of the meeting minutes from the Community Arts Commission dated October 2nd, 2025. Old business. New business.
Mr. President, I'm going to bring this up under new business. But Robert, you're going to yell at me. I wrote this down. You know I don't write anything down. So don't yell at me too bad, Robert. But no, this is my last official meeting, and it's been an honor and privilege to work with everybody in this room, in this administration, over the last 26 years. I want to thank city of Mentor, people that supported me. And it's just amazing, like we're talking about tonight, that we're going to spend $115 million in this budget. I got started on council. It was about 12. I mean, that's over 10, and it's basically 10 times, you know, of what we spent when I started 26 years ago. And we always did run in the city like a business, so we've been very proud of that. It was a little hard at first, but you, when you, you grow the top end and then you do what you can to reduce costs, that's how you get there. And that's all in terms of economic development. Some of the past council people that just mean the wonders to me in the city, in the history of the city. B.J. Krezny, probably the most conservative person I ever met. Eddie Walsh, as we all know, served with Eddie. Eddie was around for a long time. He was a master. Bruce Landig, from his military background to his calmness, cool, collected. He had a look, a way of analyzing everything where you have to be if you're on a submarine under the water for six months like he was. Bob Shiner, without Bob's view, we would never have Springbrook Park. I mean, we got, what, $12 million into Springbrook Park, approximately? Ron McKea, one of the smartest people I ever met, and one of the best council people, best people that I served with and knew all these years, just to go sailing with and still get together before he passed, was Jim Struna. I'm looking at, you know, council, it's, it's a great place to be. We're moving forward, doing the right things. I was making fun of him via text, but I called my dad, John Krieger. Birthday's May 23rd. Good luck to him. Sorry he couldn't be here. Matt Donovan, great serving with you, what you've done and what you've accomplished, and sorry for the way that you were treated for your two years as presidency. Wish I could have done more. And looking out in the crowd, I see Brian Cook, the new elect. So Brian, congratulations. Welcome. And Maggie, congratulations on another term in school board. You know, keep up the hard work, because it's all about schools, and it's all about police and fire and the basic city services. For my department heads looking on, you know, council takes a lot of credit for a lot of things, but if it's not for the department heads and administration coming up with the ideas, stuff doesn't really get done, and it doesn't move forward. So Lauren, great job taking over for Matt. Lauren and I, God, we've known each other since high school and in college, so what, 40 years now? Robert, he's in the audience tonight. One of Ken's greatest things he did was hire you. You came in, took over for Tony Zanpedro, and Tony did a, you know, great job, and it hasn't leveled off. Ken, I'm going to come back to you. Matt did a great job. You are exactly like Dave Molinowski, just with darker hair. Do you play darts? He's really good. I'm really bad. But same philosophy. You got to keep that philosophy up. Kevin, world's out there. You should go get another job with Stairs or somebody, or you could really make some money. I've never met a person that remembers everything from, I don't even know what restaurant that you ate at, but he remembers what you ate. Ken Kaminsky, you and your staff, I mean, unbelievable what you guys do for Mentor Rocks and all the stuff that you accomplish is truly amazing. Chiefs, or Captain Handy, Chief Zach, how long you guys been here now?
35.
35?
Oh, my God.
32. So you're longer than me. Okay, so you're, you're the first and second, and I'm the third longest in the room. You guys, without police and fire, anything you need, don't ever hesitate spending money there because you need it. I mean, you got to have it because the basic city services, schools, is what it's all about. But I've also had the opportunity to serve with some good city managers. Jay Suso, John Conrad, best thing he ever did was hire Tony Zanpedro. John was great at his job, and then we brought in Ken Filippiak. Ken, I was very proud of saving you is because we have an interesting city manager, city council person viewpoint. You're my older brother. Love you to death. We agree to disagree. We fight a little bit, like brothers do, but we always have each other's backs, and I appreciate that and love, love all the department heads for that. And the surrounding communities, it's such an honor to work with so many different cities. But I'm Mentor Lake, Dave Eves, especially Paul Morris, Bob Fiallo, who took over for Mr. Anderson. All will be council, which is funny because I grew up with most of those guys. We have Doug Lewis, Tony Zanpedro in the audience from Paintsville, Derek Abney. They are a great council. You guys are really moving forward, doing fabulous things in Paintsville. We all have to work together because without working together, Lake County wouldn't be the place that it needs to be. And that's where the elected officials come in. One of my oldest and dearest friends, Chris Galloway, can't thank him enough, Lake County Auditor. It's how I got to know Jamie Callender. Jamie's been on a term for 16 years, eight, often then eight again, and great leaders in terms of like John Hymerchek, Ron Young, Rich Rogovich, good friend, known for years through my family. My cousins, good friends with him, Morris Beverage. And last but not least, I'd like to thank my family and friends. You guys have melt, make this place a great place over the last 26 years. I bounce ideas off you. You tell me sometimes that it's a great idea. You tell me sometimes it's a stupid idea. Sometimes it'll never work. And that's when I call people like Tony Zanpedro when he was here, or Robert Fowler, or Ken Filippiak, and say, hey, I got an idea. Can we do this? You always have to reinvent the wheel. You have to keep on moving forward, and if it's not right, you go back and you fix it. But the only way for Mentor to truly stay to be a great place and keep people here and continue to grow is to reinvent the wheel. But last but not least, I'd like to thank people who couldn't be here. My mother, Babe, our father-in-law, miss him terribly. My son Dylan, my son Jagger, I hope he's flying right now in flight school because he's behind because the weather's been so bad right now. And my wife, Wendy. But thank you. It's been a great 26 years. Robert, you told me to keep it short and sweet. Said even write some things down. Well, I started writing this afternoon, and that's why I came where I was at. So you could yell at me tomorrow, okay? But thank you.
Mr. Blake?
Mr. President?
Just like to say, Scott, thank you for stepping up when I needed a vice president. I was in sort of a jam back then, and you stepped up and you became my vice president, and I think we did a lot of good things together, and I want to wish you the best of luck, and thank you for your service to the city.
Thanks, Brett. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Mr. President? Mr. President, I just want to say thank you for the kind words, Councilman Marn, and our, on behalf of the administration, we appreciate all the support you've given us over, in my case, the last 15 years, and I know it goes back a long time before that. So thank you for everything, and best of luck for you, for your future.
But no, thank you most of all. I mean, like we said, sometimes we've got to stick our neck out. I mean, Mentor Rocks, you know, we started, and then the amphitheater, Ken and I, you and I started, and we were a little nervous, and our running joke between us was always, well, if this doesn't go well, we're going to be hanging from this thing. And we were, what, planning on 3,500 residents, or people a week, right, Mr. Kaminsky?
Yes.
And now we're averaging 7,500? So sometimes you got to stick your head out a little bit, make sure it happens. Like I said, if it's not, go back and fix it. But I appreciate you being a very forward-looking city manager because your department heads, and then the department heads who they hire, it all starts from the top and it melts its way down, and that's why Mentor is such a great place. We've got so many great people working for us.
Thank you. Counsel, any other new business? Okay, persons before counsel, we have one. Please remember when you're called, come up to the podium, name, address, four minutes. Anthony Zanpedro.
Anthony Zanpedro, resident 9286 Thomas Court, Mentor, Ohio. Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, members of the administration. I'd like to take my short piece of the ability to speak freely to recognize and thank Councilman Scott Marn for his over quarter century of hard work on behalf of the citizens of, of the city of Mentor. I got to work closely with Scott for 16 years of my career, and I can say without a doubt, he's one of the hardest-working council people I've ever encountered, and I've dealt with a lot of councils over a lot of years. Scott was not just a leader, but a hard charger in the economic development of the city of Mentor. He was a big reason Avery Dennison's World Headquarters is in town, not to mention other businesses such as Malish Brush and Max Printing, while also helping to retain other significant employers for the city, which in turn relates to that very nice general fund and reserves that the city enjoys today. So excellent work there. He had the vision to take on and lead many quality of life issues that I appreciate as a resident, not the least of which was a probably the lowest rubbish charge in the county. So that, again, foresight, vision, thank you, Mr. Marn. Also, the construction of the AMP, I remember when we tore down the old bandstand, and Scott was right there saying, let's get it done. And we knocked the old bandstand down, and we had to, we had to do something, and it turned into just the wonderful facility we call the AMP. So not to mention dedicating and securing the city, the area's first dog park. So that was, again, good foresight. Matt Donovan said the best thing. He said he stepped up, and that was the thing that I always saw with Scott. When it came to our nonprofits, he stepped up. I mean, he was the president of United Way. He was a board member for the Chamber of Commerce. And I think the thing I was most amazed at is he spent an entire summer learning how to dance so that he could participate in the Dancing with the Stars fundraiser for Lifeline.
Ken was supposed to do it, too, and he backed out. I don't give a.
Yeah, that, that was.
You do it, I'll do it. Okay, I'll do it. I forgot about that.
But good things from them, and they're an excellent organization that, that helps members of not only Mentor's community, but throughout Lake County and Geogee County. So just to sum up, these are, you know, just a small fraction of the items I know you've been involved in during your tenure. And as one resident, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Marn, for your public service.
Thank you, Tony. I know you're coming up here and doing that. I appreciate it. And my other older brother, so before I got on the council, I had a younger brother, and now I got two older brothers. So appreciate you guys. Love you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zanpedro.
Move to adjourn?
Second.